Good evening. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I will now call for meeting to order. I have it at 6:00 PM. I have all trustees in attendance, and I will take us into the Pledge of Allegiance. I apologize we didn't have printed agendas, but hopefully you can see our agenda. We're trying out a new layout, so thank you everyone for your flexibility and trying something new. For appointment of Secretary Pro Tem on our agenda tonight, I believe that this agenda item may not be necessary. As we'll be holding officer elections tonight for the Board, including but not limited to Secretary. If the Board is comfortable proceeding without appointment of a Secretary Pro Tem, I can record the results of our votes as meeting chair and work with our newly appointed or elected Secretary after tonight's meeting to finalize the official records. Be comfortable with that one for the next few minutes. Be on our best behavior. All right, our consent agendas. Trustees, you received an email from Mary Mailer with our financial reports on Monday, so you should have those in your inbox. I know we've got computers tonight because we're interviewing some electronics and try and share those on the screen as well. I'd also note that per our CCL policies, the Board of Trustees bylaws Article 5, Order of Business Section 2 states that the report of the Executive Director is a standing agenda item to the ongoing transition. We don't have a report for that in your packet tonight, so you'll note that. Otherwise, I would hear a motion for the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda, except that we pull the financial reports out pending the audit.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we can move to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so the next item on our agenda then is our public comment. I want to thank members of the public who are here tonight to speak to address the Board for their engagement in the process. If you signed up to speak tonight, I would like to provide a handout to the Board. Please come forward at this time so that we can move as efficiently as possible through our speakers. I think we've got three speakers tonight, so I will call your name and then say who is up next so that you are ready. Thank you.
Two more pages for just one copy.
Just one copy. We will share. We have time. First speaker up tonight is Kevin Bright. Second speaker is Rich and Gary.
Welcome, Kelly. It's good to see you. All right, with invocation listed on the agenda this evening, I would like to express my support of our nation's centuries-old tradition that has been practiced since our founding. The deeply rooted tradition of seeking God and prayer as a nation has given us thousands of calls to prayer, as well as routine prayer before each legislative session. There will be some who say this violates the Establishment Clause or violates the separation of church and state, so I want to address those two arguments proactively. The Establishment Clause is listed in the First Amendment to prohibit the government from establishing a state religion. This means that if some in this room choose not to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, or recently some have chosen to take the front row seats and read a book instead of paying attention to the meeting, well, you can practice that the same. First Amendment rights to protest the invocation by refusing to join in prayer. You don't have to stand. You can even plug your ears if you don't want to hear it, but you are welcome to join. Without coercion, to join in prayer, an invocation simply references the same biblical principles our nation was founded on. Those principles reference natural rights given by God, not government, and to abandon those principles and specifically target attempts to ban Christianity from public spaces is to coerce everyone else to accept an atheistic worldview, which is at odds with our founding documents. One example: We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, so is Creator; that they are endowed by their Creator with certain alienable rights, rights given by God that cannot be taken away; that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of heaven, happiness. It is unfortunate that everyone knows these words penned by Thomas Jefferson, yet they are uneducated about the five words he wrote that have been taken out of context and wielded as a weapon against people of faith for generations now. I'm talking about separation of church and state. Those words cannot be found in the Constitution or any other founding documents. They can be found in a personal letter between Thomas Jefferson and the Danbury Baptist Church. This church was concerned that the free exercise clause in the First Amendment would be misinterpreted, granting their right to practice their faith based on government-given rights, not God-given rights. Thomas Jefferson's reply was to reassure the church that the federal government would not interfere with their free exercise of religious practice, thus referencing a separation of church and state. In other words, the government would not compel the denomination. It had always been understood that the government does not have the right to compel you to join a religion, but the government also has the legal authority to ensure order to prevent religious practices that promote immorality such as infanticide, polygamy, et cetera, referring to these things as subversive of good order. Those things obviously will not go on here, and this peaceful group of all different denominations and backgrounds would do well to follow the example laid down before us. The founding fathers came with prayer to unify such a diverse nation that recognized that our rights come from God alone. There's 33 pages I gave you there of prayer practices in state legislatures in all 50 states and territories. There's guidelines there.
15 seconds.
Do what?
15 seconds.
Okay. Oh, I've got 15 seconds left? I need to get my ears plugged in. Thank you, John. But anyway, yeah, definitely. Thank you. But anyway, there's a pretty good guideline there and just how everybody's practicing prayer in all our state legislations, all the states. And I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
You're right. Our next speaker is Rich and Gary, and our final speaker this evening is Rich and Mitch.
You're welcome, Kelly. Glad to see you.
So I am going to quote Ben Franklin here. He says, "I have lived a long time, sir, a long time, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of this truth that God governs in the affairs of men." So apparently, the proposal of adding an invocation to the beginning portion of the Board of Trustees meeting has caused some consternation on social media today. Invocations have a long history in our nation. Thank you, Kevin. From the national government down to the local level. In colonial America, prayer was common before legislative sessions. The first Continental Congress opened its sessions with prayers. After the formation of a country, the U.S. Congress opened sessions with prayer, indeed appointing chaplains to deliver prayers. In 1983, in Marsh versus Chambers, the Supreme Court upheld the practice of opening legislative sessions with prayer. In the 20th century, invocations began to include non-Christian citizens. State legislatures in Clumby, Missouri, have adopted a like pattern of the storied tradition of opening prayers. In 2014, in Town of Greece versus Galloway, the Supreme Court upheld the constitutionality of prayers at town meetings, extending the Marsh precedent. Now, I ask you, why would some citizens oppose invocations? Some undoubtedly are afraid for various reasons, but frankly, prayer works. There are those who know that prayer works, and like the books they seek to push on children in order to indoctrinate them into a sociopolitical viewpoint, the suppression of prayer in a civic space pushes out divine guidance and aid. A prayerless civil society eventually becomes a godless civil society. Does anyone doubt that? Indeed, the suppression of civic religious virtue has opened the way for all kinds of mischief. Exhibit A is our library, which currently houses hundreds of sexually explicit and/or age-inappropriate books geared toward children. Our Board of Trustees and our staff, as well as the public, should have the benefit of a monthly invocation at this meeting. I'm sure the Board will be able to work out the particulars so that our community is properly represented according to law. Allowing the suppression of a civic right, which like the Pledge of Allegiance has no forced participation, is to give up a potent and powerful aid to our representatives and our citizens, and ultimately to our children. Now is not the time to call for a false unity. We must not forget that we're fighting to protect children and parent rights. Does anyone think this battle is over? Our commissioners need prayer. Our Missouri legislators need prayer. Our governor needs prayer. Our school boards and teachers need prayer. And our library board needs prayer.
Yes. Our final speaker.
Welcome. Good to see you. I just want to once again say thank you, all five of you, for dedicating your time and spending time away from your family and stuff, and thank you for your love for the people in Christian County and for the children. I had a phone call last week from a lady, and it was about the library, and she asked me some questions. Basically, it got down to, she said, "It's a safe gift for me to take my little daughter into the children's section." And I said, "Well," I said, "we're working on that." And I just want to encourage you and remind you. You know, I read a book here two weeks ago. The name of it was Esther. Very interesting. I highly encourage you to read that. Four main characters. There was the old king. There was Haman, a very wicked man that wanted to destroy the Jewish people. And then there was Moriah, that was a good man. And he had a niece, a young girl, and her name was Esther. I don't think she knew growing up that the hands of God would be on her. She became the queen, and she ended up going to the king. And her uncle told her, he said, "I believe you were brought into the kingdom of God for a time such as this." And history has a way of repeating itself. He told her, he said, "If you don't do it," he said, "God will raise up another one." We had five board members that could have done something. They didn't do it. Don't miss your opportunity. I encourage you to do something for these children and the families.
All right, that should take us to the business on our agenda this evening. So first item on our agenda is our Eastern trustee welcome, Kelly Roberts. Again, at the June 20th, 2025 Christian County Commissioner meeting, Kelly Roberts was appointed to the East County trustee representing the Sparta area, which is West Benton, East Benton, Sparta, Brunner, Oldville, Lethill, Chadwick, Garrison, and Seneca, with their service beginning this month, July 2025. Kelly joins us tonight in this role, and I would like to echo the sentiments of others and welcome her. So if you would like, you can do an introduction. You don't have to. You still want to.
I'm Kelly Roberts. I live in Sparta. Mama four. I work at Derry University, and I'm glad to be here.
We appreciate your willingness to serve in this role, help represent the patrons and stakeholders of our Eastern, that Christian County will continue serving with you, so thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda this evening is our officer elections. President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. We do not need to elect all of those. We have a current vacancy of Secretary. We can elect as many of those as is appropriate with our new members. We simply want to allow them an opportunity to serve in that capacity. In your packets, I included a handout with what those roles are out of our bylaws on our board packet, if that's helpful. Is there any questions? I know we have new members to the Board if they had questions on those roles or those responsibilities or that before we begin discussion on our nominations. Hearing none, I would hear a motion. Or a nomination?
I nominate Mary Hernandez de Carle as Secretary. Assuming she's willing to accept.
Wonderful.
I second that motion. Thank you, ladies.
Are there any other nominations? Other changes that the Board might like to make? Not? I would hear it as a formal motion. Hearing none, you want to make a motion?
We'll make a motion to keep the current President, Vice President, Treasurer, and and yourself. I guess I cannot nominate myself, but you guys retaining your roles. Should you feel comfortable doing that?
Let's deal with the Secretary role first, and then we can do a nomination for a re-roll of the other.
If however you want to take that motion.
I cannot nominate myself to be Secretary. Because Diana made a motion. She nominated me to be Secretary, and then Kelly seconded, so we just need to vote.
All right, let's do that. So we will hear the first motion as trustee Hernandez de Carle to be elected as Secretary. Seconded by trustee Roberts. Thank you. Is there any discussion on that, this emotion? All right, hearing none, I can take it to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, is there any other nominations that would be like to be made or a motion to affirm current election?
I move that we affirm the positions of President to Echo Shrek and Vice President to trustee Brazil and Treasurer to trustee Gary.
I second your motion.
All right, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will take it to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you all for that.
What about over at large? Do we need to do anything for them?
I don't believe so. Okay. All right, I believe our next item on our agenda then is our policy and bylaw draft first reading. And trustees, I would draw your attention to pages 7 through 55 of your packet. It contains the proposed CCL policy manual revisions. Based on the volume of these edits that we will be reviewing, I did encourage the trustees to bring their laptops if they prefer to review the edits in that way. And then I would yield the Board to trustee Gary, if you don't mind, as the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee to provide a little bit of the background on the work that's been happening to date and review what this Subcommittee and the CCL Attorney have done in reviewing these proposed changes.
Thank you. So we did meet twice as a group, and then we did have the opportunity to review this for about 30 days. Our legal counsel reviewed it as well. The focus of revisions and updates were to bring it current with regard to our vote to disassociate from the ALA. We still have some work to do, but I wanted to get the first reading out because it's forty-some pages. It's quite a large document. So I wanted to get the first one out. And I think the goal tonight is to make this document available to everyone, as it will be included in the packet, I believe, next time, so that everyone will have a chance to look at it, gather their feedback and concerns or comments, updates, so that when Will on boards, he'll have something that is as close to a final product as it can be, and that should help the conversation move a little bit faster. My goal for tonight is to just kind of go through the comments and updates that Diane and I had, some of them that Robert Krotowski had, and I did get some comments from all of you on this. And I think as we move through it, we'll just address the comments. There's huge amounts of this document that stayed the same. We didn't want to get into the blades of grass like in Clement Weather and things like. I mean, those are other sound, and we don't need to touch them. So let me move through here. I'll just stop when I get to a comment. We'll go at this here. So the mission statement, I just updated this because what we were trying to do is come up with a mission statement that spoke to a library's mission at large that is less programmatic. And this is obviously going to have to change when Will gets here because I'm sure he's got some ideas of what he wants our mission statement to look like. He was very clear that he wanted our mission statement to align to the programs. And so we need his feedback. This is just a placeholder. The guiding principles, this is just something that we kind of put together, ran it by Diana and legal counsel. It's basically just what it is. It's the preservation of heritage, constitutional principles, responsibility to community standards. We wanted to make sure that the community knows that we're going to listen to them, and we're going to make this library specific to the community. And then the last one, protection of children. One of the reasons we're here is to make sure that this library is a safe place for everyone. The collections policy's been updated to include all of the relevant federal laws. That was a recommendation from our district attorney. We already complied with Children's Internet Protection Act. For the most part, there's a couple of small things we may have to do to make it better. But basically, this is the law, the federal law. And then there's some relevant Missouri laws that are in here. I'm not going to go over the laws, but as this is made available to everyone, you can look them up yourself. Code of State Regulations, we recently just recertified with the state of Missouri. And one of the requirements for the $63,000 that they give us is that we're compliant with 15 CSR 30-20. That's from the Secretary of State. So that's basically it. And then there's the criteria for children's and teen sections. They're just basically going to take us and bring us to compliance with the law. Again, the way this, this is just the spirit of what we're trying to do and include the statute. But the other thing is we want, we want to hear from Will and the staff on how they're going to execute this. How does this get deployed? Because we need to have a library that has First Amendment protections to everyone, but we want to protect children in the children's area. And then there's some information in here about review and removal of materials. We did some updates on the reconsideration form. I don't want to collect more information from the person who's making a concern about a book than is necessary. We want to protect people's information. We were previously collecting that and having to redact some of it, so we'll be updating that. Age appropriateness, I mean, that's, a lot of this stuff is, and I do have a comment from Kelly. She wanted to add number four in here, so we had three. And if it's okay with you as is, Kelly, I can just paste that in as a number four?
Or replace?
Or replace one of the other?
Replace three.
Three. Okay, we'll figure out how to get that in there. And then if it's acceptable, maybe you can take a look at it once it's updated. And then Kelly had another comment here. I saw online forms for requests for consideration. I saw.
We kind of talked about that one, right?
Yeah, I think our current method is you have to download the form. You have to fill it out and then submit it. We live in a technology age. We can start using technology. I think that's a good suggestion to do.
And I don't think it has to, the person's name doesn't have to be on there, so it's not personal identifiers, but more where the concern is coming from geographically, which branch, which area, and more specific as to why. That way, we know if it's something within our purview or if it already isn't accordance with our policy and procedures.
Well, I think it'll also help us to aggregate the data so that we can identify any trends to inform decision-making.
So online get suggestions. We'll have to take that to William and Heath or whoever's managing that. So that, I mean, I think we're thinking about a Google form. Those things are pretty easy. They just populate all right into a spreadsheet. Probably easier than reading some handwriting. Some people's handwriting is not that clear. Let's see. Kelly, it's a cost add to budget. Was that with regard to receiving training? Oh, okay. And we were talking about doing CBT, computer-based training? I haven't done a whole lot of research on that yet, but I'm pretty certain you could find some kind of training that we can just capture and make it available so that we don't have to hire a trainer. And, you know, it's mainly understanding and then accepting that responsibility with your understanding. We'll have to work with Will on that one as well because the Board doesn't have anything to do with staff training. That's an operations thing. Let's see, Diana, you had a comment about age of consent.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what I was referencing there.
I think the split between children and teens.
Yeah, I think so.
And the law doesn't really get a lot into that. It just basically says minors. Robert did get a chance to look at this, and I think as long as we do age appropriate, it'll be okay.
But what does age appropriate encompass?
Well, first thing I think we have to do is comply with the law. And the law says minors can't have certain types of material, even under the First Amendment unless, or the parents have to be consenting. So that's the first part.
So anytime we use the term age appropriate, it's going to be in reference to minors?
Well, the statute up here basically aligns all that up. It tells you what a minor is in the state of Missouri is 17 and under. So then the Missouri state law then tells you what is not allowed under the state. And then the federal law says the same thing. And then the Code of State Regulations basically specifically says we can't put those materials in areas that are specifically designated for children or minors. So that's going to be a compliance.
I was just asking so that, you know, someone who isn't versed in everything that's going on with libraries can read the policy guidelines and have an understanding of how the library is operating. This is why I was asking, because it can be a little overwhelming.
I think we're going to have to have some kind of practical training so that someone can look at something and go, "appropriate, not appropriate." They have to be able to have some kind of training guideline. And I've heard the previous executive director make that comment. They're going to have to have some kind of training.
Well, because I was under the impression that the policy guidelines would provide that framework for being able to determine what gets added to the collection, library collection, and what doesn't.
Well, my thinking was, so in the scheme of things, you have statute. You have, you have, well, bylaws are specific to us, pretty much, but we are subject to statute. Then you have policy. And then inside policy, like for example, he, the Mary, they have a set of SOPs, if you will, standard operating procedures that are specific to them. They don't, because it's specific to their role. So the collections, the people that are involved in procuring collections would have to have something like that. And again, Will's going to have to work with them on that so that they have clear guidance on what they should be doing.
Okay, because.
It's not going to be a policy, is my point.
Okay, but how are we going to communicate that to the public, though? Let's say someone wants to request a book for purchase. And, you know, I've seen, because I went ahead and I started cross-referencing our policies, what work that other libraries has done. And what was helpful was to see how in some libraries, when they talk about the collections, they start off very broad, where they talk about in general, the collection, because the library serves everyone, and then they would have a subsection for how the policy is developed for minors. And that's where they would get into the nitty-gritty of what kinds of laws are being used to justify the positions that they're getting in. And I just think for the sake of transparency, if we're able to. And I just think for the sake of transparency, if we're able to provide that framework of what our library is criteria, what criteria our library is utilizing to purchase material, then that would be helpful to the public.
Right. I agree. And I looked at some other collection policies from other libraries around the country. And this is by no way... Because a real collection policy says things like, we're going to have books on science, we're going to have books on mathematics, we're going to... And the real full-blown collection policy would have all that. I'm not... Will will have to do that. He'll have to develop that. And this is really just what we're trying to avoid breaking the law here, really. And then we can fill in with what Will would like to see for the children's area. He can put that in there. I don't want this to be all thou shalt nots. There should be some other things in there, so. Age of consent, we talked about that. Again, we're going to move through this really quickly, guys, because a lot of this has no comments and will probably remain unchanged unless Will thinks it needs to change. And then we'll take it back and we'll discuss confidentiality. We haven't really done much with this. I would like to have Heath and Will go over this. From what I've heard and seen, I think we do a pretty good job of protecting information. We do have Firewall as a Fortnite or something like that, or something like that. One of those companies that has a firewall. And I've heard of it. It's one of those major Fortune 500 companies. But, you know, obviously, we have to go through and make sure that we're only collecting the information we need. The other thing I don't see in here that maybe we could look at with Will and Heath is data retention. I know we have to keep some things. There are some things we don't need to keep. And that actually protects the patron, and it protects the library as well. So maybe we can have some kind of review of that. But again, this is a work in progress. Security measures. Let's see what else we got. In climate weather. We don't have inclement weather in Missouri, so we're good on that. That was a joke. Petitioning policy. I don't think there's much need for change there, but we can, again, have Will look at all this. I know he had some interesting situations in Florida where they had, you know, teenagers were getting loud or whatever. Maybe he's got some thoughts about how do we be welcoming but not disruptive of what's going on. Use of the facilities. Again, we're not going to go into every little one of these. This will be available on the packet. So that means, as part of the packet, they'll have electronic version. You guys can search it, look at it. And you have our emails. Discrimination, that's pretty much the law. We can't... Conduct. I'm just going to move down to the next comment. Okay. Flag for review. This one was use of social media. This is already in the employee handbook. So based on legal counsel's comment, I just added, staff should not be making media posts to purport to be policy or statements on behalf of the library. Basically, what that looks like is I... Well, I'm not an employee, but as a board member, I can't say, well, the library says this about that. You can't use your position at a workplace to make a position that would represent the entire library. You can do whatever you want on your personal media, but you can't do it on behalf of the library. That's basically what this says. It's already in the employee handbook, so this is just bringing it out to the policy. Is there any discussion on that? Most workplaces have a policy like that. Use of likeness. I don't see anybody stealing our logo, but that might happen. This one. This was update, refresher. Okay, so the way the library cards are issued, I think we have all-access card. And then there are cards... I'm a little rusty on this one. There are cards that are really under the parent's card. And so we really did want Will to look at this one, how we issue library cards. Any discussion on that?
I think we need to have a disclaimer for library cards that... Library card applications for minors, just once again reminding... Well, I mean, just letting them know what access is going to be granted. And, you know, are we going to allow parents to... Well, are we going to have a class of library cards? Are we going to have just a youth card? Or are we still going to continue to have the all-access library card? What's that going to look like? Because it gets to be tricky. You know, are we going to allow... Are we going to be okay with people, kids having all-access cards as long as the parents sign a waiver, maybe informed consent?
I think by default, an adult has an all-access card.
But what about a child?
I think we have to... I think we already have the parent test to give consent. That's already...
Yes, but when I signed my children up to get a library card, I was not aware of the content that was on some of the shelves. And so that is problematic because had I known, I would have handled the situation differently. And if we are going to organize the children's and young adults section in a way where we're going to remove any book that violates, you know, state and federal statutes, does that mean that the child will be able to... That most families will feel comfortable letting their children be there, so it's not going to be necessary to have a disclaimer? I just... I want to be as transparent as possible with people, letting them know what kinds of materials we have in our library, I guess is the point of my comment. Because not everyone's aware. Not everyone's aware that your youth all-access library card can allow a nine-year-old to check out an R-rated movie without a parent present.
I think a disclaimer might be helpful if we don't already have something like that. Now, we can run it by Robert and say, just be aware, there may be some materials that some parents might find offensive for their children.
Yeah, or even letting them know. Like, I mean, are we going to... Yeah, it's the movies, right? It's a lot... Maybe this is something that we collaborate with Will on because he'll be familiar with the jargon that is used in the library world to communicate that. But I think it's important to let people know what they're getting when they sign up.
Yep. We're adding a note for that. Fair enough. And you're right, digital access is... It's got to be consistent with what we're doing with printed materials, so. Any other discussion on that?
It could be as simple as adding to the consent page just the policy and procedures that talk about the access at the top.
Yeah, I think as part of your filling out a library card application, it should be built right into that same form.
It really should, because I think right now, all it mentions is that you will be financially responsible for any damage to the materials that you check out. There's nothing in there indicative of the kinds of materials that you will have access to.
Could you do a form of like checkbox for different categories? Like, I want my kid to have access to books but not anything digital or... I don't know if... You'd have to have the categories set up first. I don't know if that would be feasible to do that.
Probably. Well, that's why I really... We need... So the way we have it is you don't have access to digital, or you have access to everything. I'd love to hear Will's thoughts on how do we make this... Can we make it all a card? Can we do that? Can...
Yeah, I don't know logistically. I don't know if it's possible to do that.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
And that's why I think laying it all up and being as, you know, informing people what they're getting and just having examples of types of contents that you will have accessible or access to will be important.
So the note is attached to the application process, a disclaimer. There is a potential that they might... We're going to need some legal language around that. And then get Will's thought on whether we can make these things all a card, yes to digital, no to digital, in and out of the children's area. There's already some language in here about digital access card. I don't have much on there. Collaborate? Well, perfect. We're doing pretty good. We're on page 28 of 40-something, so.
I didn't drop in some of my comments, but I'll do that afterward, and you guys can think about it.
And if it's a comment that you need legal review, you know, just say, "At Robert", and he'll get an email.
No, you guys handled all the legal work great. I think it's just more, you know, seeking clarification regarding things like the guiding principles and such.
Yeah. I don't know... I had heard in one of the meetings with staff that we're not doing proctoring anymore? Is that Nicholas? Did we stop doing proctoring? Okay, so that can come out. I don't know if we ever will again, but if... Right now, we're not, so we can pull that one out. $10 fee, that's pretty cheap.
Does the... Do we know if the public schools in our areas need proctors?
I don't do that.
I don't know. Maybe we ask them first.
Yeah, I don't know. We were proctoring like SAT or something like that. I don't know. I think the universities do it, don't they? Yeah, so you can still get that service. Staff research. I don't think there was no comments on that. Outreach to community. I know Will definitely want to weigh in on that. Volunteer process. Kelly, you had a... I'm once again making this an electronic form. So I think that's fairly doable. So we're going to be talking about some edits that Jan has had. And I'm not going to talk about them right now, so we'll double dip into that one. But it's basically around the RSMO 610. We have quite a bit in here now on that, but we'll be... We might be adding more, depending on how the conversation goes. This one here, we had the executive director is designated as custodian of library records. We previously had the custodian of records as a delegated duty from the executive director. I'd like to talk to Will about that going forward. That's... I think the executive director doesn't have to be by statute. They can delegate it. And I think it's a good idea to delegate it because it's... As a way, it's been a bit of work. And, you know, you're ready to give that up, right, Heath? You don't want to be doing that anymore? I know I wouldn't want to be doing it, so. And this is, again, sunshine law, section 610. Public comments. We didn't have any comment on public comments. Procurement policy is pretty solid. I didn't see any need for comment or... Yes?
I have a quick question, going back to public comments. How do you guys feel about having people who are not Christian County taxpayers comment during our library meetings?
It would be hard to validate that.
Even if we can't ask for an ID?
Those are two different things. I think having an ID in the state of Missouri versus paying taxes in the state of Missouri, I don't think are synonymous. I hear your potential concern there. I think it would be appropriate for us to hear from our stakeholders, but I think there's also others that use our services. I know you can get cards from other counties. You could pay to be a cardholder here and not be a Christian County resident here, but you paid your fees and instead of your taxes in that instance, so.
I... Relative to something else, we've already had speakers who are not county residents or taxpayers. We've already done it. I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's relevant to what we're doing here at the library. Sometimes you have subject matter experts that want to come speak, and they don't live here. So I'm okay with that. They stay within the three minutes and don't yell obscenities at us. I don't have a problem.
Yeah. I was just saying, I was just on my ass. I mean, I'm indifferent, but it's come up before, so I thought I'd throw it out there.
Any other thoughts on public comments? Okay. Procurement policy, it's pretty solid as is. I think... I want to say, Kelly, you had a question. When does a vote... Oh, it was Diana. When does a vote that the board makes become effective? So the instrument of execution... Gosh, I'm having to think more legally lately. So there's a couple of things that may have to happen effectively. One is, like, for example, signing checks. So I call the bank, and this is what they say. And then I've checked with other legal folks. As soon as we make a vote, it can legally be effective. But they... To execute that, they would need a letter from the president with a copy to the secretary, and then the recorded vote. And what I would do is just put the entire board on vote. So that's with regard to check signing. Then that would go to the bank, and then they would update the signature card. So we can do that, like, within 24 hours of taking a vote with regard to banks. And I've confirmed that with two bank managers. So that's legal. The thing that will slow you down is if you make a motion on something that requires some follow-on action, you know, that... Those things take time. So the other thing that would cause a delay in the vote or delay in the action would be the motion itself requires a delay. Like, this is effective when Will gets here. You know, we've done that already. So you put a delay on it. But the action can be effective immediately. One of the edits that I'm going to ask for is that the bylaws can be put into effect without having to wait to... And we can talk about that later on. I know there'll be some concerns around that. The only one of the downsides to that is it doesn't give everyone 30 days to let it bake in. So I think for things that are significant in nature, we can probably let them cook for 30-plus days. There's already emergency provision to make actions. And sunshine law provides this as well. Sometimes you just have to do something, like the roof caved in, we've got to do something about it. And it's more than what would be needed to do a request for proposal or to... You know, we've got to take care of it right now. So there is a provision for that. To stay compliant, then, what we would do is immediately after taking that action, we would let the public know we had to do this. And then it would become public knowledge. Let's see. What else we got? From Mary Miller. Oh, this was library bill setup and auto pay. And Kelly, you also had a question about the use of checks. So any... You guys want to speak to that?
Just delay of time. And I think through QuickBooks, when you go to the cloud-based, most everything can be done through there. And then in QuickBooks, it just automatically comes out of the subcode that you set it up under.
Now, I don't know... I mean, we'd have to work with Will and Mary Miller on this, but there may be some situations where you have to cut a check. You don't have a choice. You know, you're dealing with a vendor who just doesn't do credit cards. When that happens, we have checks.
There's also like a automatic, you know, come out of the account type thing. But it just as a comment to make it easier and quicker.
I'm with you. I'm probably sitting on... How many checks here? Like 20?
33.
33. So I'm all about that. But the rest of it, I mean, two signers on checks, these are great controls, they're great financial controls for audit, contracts and signatures. This is all... What did we change here? And/or, we just changed it to and. Authorized trustees as defined by the board. And one of the things that I did change is the succession policy. Who was that? Because we struggled with that. When the executive director either goes out on a long-term basis or an extended time period, at least in my experience, it's better to take that job and dole it out as best you can. That way, you're not putting all of those responsibilities on one person. It makes your, your business operations much more resilient. And that way, if one person can't do it, you're only having to re-delegate that particular role and responsibility as opposed to finding someone who's gonna leave their normal role and take on the executive interim director role. But again, we'll run this through Will and see if he can buy that. I probably jumped ahead on this one, but. Proxy we needed. See, signatures on library checks. The other one is, this was written as a role-based, and when we were talking to the staff about this, there was some concern about, well, it says gotta be this person by role. And one of the things that we'd like to change is let's not handcuff ourselves. We can, we can have someone else sign for checks as long as we update, we vote for it, and the bank is informed, we have a recorded vote. It doesn't have to be a specific title, right? So, that got changed. And it doesn't seem like it did. QuickBooks, QuickBooks, that should solve that. And I didn't ask this question of you, Mary. I start, sorry to drag you into the conversation. Do we do exports from the bank directly into QuickBooks today? Do you do any of that?
No.
No? Okay. I think there is a possibility of doing that. At least when I had QuickBooks, it worked like that. Sometimes that's helpful. Sometimes it'll overwrite what you're doing. It'll create a duplicate. So, we'd have to, we'd have to probably work out whether that's even helpful or not, but.
Since most of our things are in cash coming in
Right.
or EFT coming in that we know before it hits the bank and the stuff going out, most of it is checks and most of our vendors require checks.
Right.
That's why we don't do it now. We have the ability, but there's no, it slows us down more than it helps.
Okay. Continuity of essential operations, budget planning should be done in July. One of the things that Diana and I were looking at is, I know that some of the financial planning has started. We, as, at least as a treasurer, and I know the board would probably like to see the financial budget planning as early as it is starting to form up as a draft. That way, we're not in a real pickle to try and review it in less than 30 days. And I think that would help us. So, right now, we don't see the completed budget till November, right? Mary, I think it's November we vote on it.
We usually have a summary draft in October.
October, okay.
But it's just high level.
Okay. And earlier's better, even if it's high level. So, we'll work with Will on that one. And like I told, like I was saying, the succession policy, this needs to be visited. And like I said, it creates an extreme burden on one person. We don't wanna do that. Moving right through. Okay, so now we're into bylaws. Meetings. So, one of the things that we had noticed, we had created a bylaw situation where the executive directors are required at all meetings. They're not required at all meetings. We absolutely want the executive director in all open meetings and some of the closed meetings, but not in all meetings. So, it was just a kind of a strange way to word the bylaw, so we make an edit to that. This one here. I don't see the chapters. This is where we were talking about the two signatures by title. We're gonna get rid of the title and go to designate. And that could be any senior admin staff person, any director. We'll decide who that could be. We have to have at least two board trustee members, and we have to have at least two staff members. They should be director level or manager level. So, we'll let, we'll let Will designate who those should be, but it shouldn't be tied to a specific role. Let's see. Almost done. Oh, this one here. Amendment to the bylaws will be effective immediately upon adoption unless motion specifies otherwise. Any discussion on this? The reason I changed this is because people were saying things like, well, you can't, you can't make any action on this until the minutes are approved. Well, the minutes of being approved are really the official documentation of what happened. It's not the vote. It's not the action.
So, the previous policy was inaccurate?
No, it was, you can do that.
Okay.
You can do it that way, but why would you?
Oh, you're just handcuffed. You're eliminating yourself.
Basically, yeah. So, so this one, I mean, we'll still approve the minutes in the following meeting, but the vote is still valid, so. See, rules of order. We're gonna follow Robert's rules of order as best we can. I know nobody's perfect on this one, but we do, we do follow Robert's rules. Scope of authority, this is unchanged. We did this some time ago, February of this year. And that is it.
Bylaws, subcommittee.
Thank you, Robert, and take us a stab at it.
That's our first run. Those are the major edits, and I'm looking forward to Will taking a look at it and getting feedback from staff and from public and from his past experience and getting this as close to a final product as it can be.
Do you guys think that you're gonna have any more working sessions?
Yeah, as soon as Will gets on boarded, I think we probably gonna need at least one more, maybe two. I don't know.
Is it, is it just gonna be the subcommittee that's gonna be needing to do this? How would you like additional feedback to be provided to you?
So, the drafting, the editing of the thing happens with the committee, Diana and myself and Will. But the feedback comes from the board entirely. So, if Will puts something in there and say, you know, I've got a comment on that, we'll do that here. We'll do it in this form.
Okay.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have on this particular draft.
Thank you, Rob. The next item of new business on our agenda is Hagan versus Christian County Library District Settlement Agreement, Exhibit A, Sunshine Law Compliance and Legal Guidance Policy. To provide context to this agenda item, the Christian County Library District is currently a party to ongoing litigation, which has been, which has led to proposed mutual release and settlement agreement. As a part of this agreement, the board is required to hold a vote on a proposed Sunshine Law Compliance and Legal Guidance Policy included in your packets this evening as Exhibit A on number four, September 1st, 2025. The board may choose to approve, amend, or reject this policy as part of this action. No liability has been admitted by any party, and tonight's discussion is an opportunity for the board to review, deliberate, and vote on the proposed policy as outlined in the agreement. Any questions? Otherwise, I would open the floor to discussion.
I have a concern with this proposal. The fact that it is being suggested that we consult with independent counsel is...
I have the same concern.
It is, seems like it's a little far-reaching. I think it's unnecessary. We do have our own attorney that we, we have a T A P who advises us, and to seek out an additional attorney seems redundant and unnecessary.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with that assessment and have the exact same concern because the way, I think there are some good elements to this policy, but that particular provision about the independent counsel, I think is, that's a big problem. And I, because essentially every time there's any potential dispute about the sunshine law, we have to go out and hire an independent attorney that's gonna cost the district a lot of money. And we have, our, Robert Petrovsky is very capable, and that's what we hired him to do. So, we don't, this is redundant and costly. And...
And may not be successful. We've seen us going to RFP in the past unsuccessfully.
Right. And potentially, you know, we might have to get a different attorney every time. And at some point, you know, we're gonna run out of people who are competent for this kind of work, who live in this area and have to go, continually go farther and farther to feed. So, I, I would recommend that we don't adopt this policy as written, but that we take some of the other parts out of it and perhaps incorporate that into our, into our policy and bylaw revision. Because there are some, there are some good elements in it.
I agree.
I agree as well. I actually heard this from, from legal counsel about independent counsel. I mean, we're kind of in that situation now where we have an independent counsel. Request for opinion, we already do that. I think our lead contact with the attorney is our president. The only thing that I added in here was that we copy all the board members on legal opinion as rendered. I mean, that's, and we should, and we'll do that. So, we can add that into the policy or the bylaws that we have currently.
Are we ready for a motion or not?
There's other, any other questions or discussion before?
Do we need to amend and document now, or can we just say we are voting to?
I think as a condition of our settlement, we probably need to vote yea or nay on it.
Okay.
And then, but that doesn't stop us from...
You referred to the policy committee.
Yeah, that doesn't stop us later from digging into it in our policy discussions and incorporating the good elements of it.
So, what would the motion say?
I move that, I move that we reject this policy as it is currently written.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motions, specifically. Hearing none, we can go to a roll call vote. Trustee, please.
Aye to rejecting it as written.
Thank you. Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez-Sacar?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the next item on tonight's new business on the agenda is discussing adding invocations to meeting agendas. Trustee Gary, I would go forward to you.
I'll keep this short. So, the reason I think we need invocations are, I'll just give you the bullet points. I'm not gonna read. There's legal framework here. I did check with legal counsel. And we're good to do it. It is constitutional. But the reasons, the motivation is to encourage thoughtful deliberation and unity, solemnize the meeting and reflect on our common goals, honor the moral and spiritual perspectives of our community, and uphold a time-honored tradition that promotes civil discourse and public service. I'll make this available for the packet, so you'll be able to get it. You won't have to sunshine it. This is basically the draft. Again, this will have to get worked through an electronic submission process or an email. If somebody wants to sign up to speak, we will rotate. It will be non-denominational. It will be voluntary participation. You don't have to participate. You don't, just like the pledge of allegiance. You can sit. You don't have to participate. But this is basically, I think, as straightforward as it can be, nondiscriminatory. I'm not gonna go into all this, but I'll make the motion and then we can discuss. I move that we open the board trustees' regular open meeting with an invocation ceremonial portion of the meeting. The invocation will be about two minutes of non-denominational oration or in the event of no volunteer to speak, a moment of silence. Implementation would be after the final adoption of the draft. That will be the policy and bylaw draft.
Is there a second to that motion?
When can I ask questions?
The motion will not get discussed if it doesn't have a second.
It dies.
Hearing no second, the motion dies. You can have further questions.
Down below, it says two minute. Is that two minute per person or two minutes total? And up at the top, it says about.
It's about two minutes. We could say if it's got so hard stopped at two minutes. Does that get me a second if I can?
Per person or per timeframe?
No, there's only one invocation. So, the person who's speaking or the, it's the person who's speaking gets two minutes.
What does the county commission do? Do they do this?
They don't do. I heard at one point they were doing it, but I think they stopped.
What's a non-denominational oration?
It's a, someone who's speaking about spiritual things but not specific to their church affiliation.
So, are they using the words like God?
You can use God. You can use Jesus Christ. You can do all those things. You just can't say you have to be a Baptist. Or you have to be a, you can't... Yeah, it has to be non-denomination.
So, I think my concern is, you know, the purpose of the invocation sounds great, but, you know, it's open to interpretation. You know, if something is seen as being encouraging and unifying. It's, it's a slippery slope. But that's, that's where I have a concern.
Okay. It dies.
Any other questions or discussions? Would you like to try your motion again or?
I don't, do we have, is there, there's no one changed there, but there is no second, right? Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, that was bottom of our new business on the agenda, so I will call us meeting adjourned.